Ready, Madam Clerk?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, December 18, 2018. The time is 7:19. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star-Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci is absent, excused. Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Tucci, they are both absent, excused this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
We have regular meeting minutes for November 7, 2018, and November 20, 2018.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for Session 1 and 2 for August 7, 2018.
Move the minutes.
October, I have a few more.
No.
October 2, 2018, October 16, 2018, November 7, 2018, November 20, 2018, and December 4 of 2018.
Move the minutes as listed.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Reports, Commissioner Evans?
Yes, I have a code enforcement report for the month of November.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, I have my public safety report as well.
Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for December 18, 2018. Public Affairs, $165,366.09. Revenue and Finance, $2,757,218.35. Public Safety, $37,050.10. Public Works, $254,616.76. Parks and Public Property, $145,048.17. Water Utility, $114,401.51. Total Payroll, $912,462.31. For a grand total of $4386,163.29.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Ms. Rossi?
Yes, Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. I have a question regarding Ordinance 3411 and 3412. These are ordinances of the Township of Nutley authorizing the execution of financial agreement with PB 200 Metro Urban Renewal LLC in granting a tax exemption. Can you provide the details regarding these two tax exemptions?
Ms. Rossi, they are going to be tabled tonight, and the public hearing will be held the first meeting in January. If Commissioner Evans wants to address anything before then...
It's not on the agenda tonight, but Ms. Rossi, the nature of your question, is there something specific that you had?
Well, I'm just wondering the number of years and the amount, who the principals are of these companies, and what year does it end, and what will the taxes be at the end of the exemption?
I don't have the table in front of me, but the baseline is for the pilot agreements is one, it's full local taxation, so there's no exclusion for the school, as many pilot agreements or standard ones would apply.
Okay.
In Nutley's case, we're including both the municipality and the school, as well as a portion of the county savings. They will escalate at a rate of roughly 2% a year over a 30-year term. So I don't have that ending amount in front of me, but just think about it, basically 2018 taxes, less a portion for the county, which is the local amount, rising at a minimum rate of 2% a year for 30 years.
Okay, thank you. And what is PB?
PB, that's the legal name of the entity that owns Hop in the Road. Behind that is actually a company called Prism.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
Seeing none, I'll move to Commissioner Announcements. Any announcement, Commissioners? Let's go down to ordinance, public hearings. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes. This is for a handicap spot on Conover Avenue. An ordinance to amend. An ordinance codified and decoded to Township of Nutley, Chapter 22A, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Articles 6, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to add to the location set forth thereon. I move to open the public portion meeting.
Anybody wish to be heard on Ordinance Number 3404? Seeing none.
Move to close.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ordinance Number 3406 will also be tabled to the first meeting in January. We received an additional proposal from a merchant service account, and we're in the process of looking at that. So Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have an ordinance introduction, Number 3407, which is a capital bonding ordinance for roadway improvements in the amount of, the total amount is 330, but the bonding amount is $313,500.
Anybody wish to be heard on Ordinance Number 3407?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, we have to table this, right? So... Right, I remember, we have to, we need four.
Oh. So we have the public hearing, we're not going to have the vote until January?
January 3.
Or the continuation of the meeting?
The 20th of December.
At 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM.
Aye. So just to be clear, Counselor, we're having the public hearings tonight on these three ordinances, but we're continuing the meeting to have the vote on the continuation because we need how many votes to pass?
Yes, we need four votes, four affirmative votes to approve the bond ordinance.
Okay.
And since we don't have a full four members tonight, we're going to postpone the vote till Thursday morning, assuming we have four, and then if not, we'll pick another day.
So I rescind my motion to adopt the ordinance, Number 3407. Okay?
We can have the public hearing, we just have to postpone the vote.
Which we closed, we properly closed, right?
Commissioner Evans, move on to Ordinance Number 3408?
Yes, 3408 is a bond in the gross amount of $1,670,000. The actual bond portion is $1,586,500, and this is for other capital improvements in the township.
Anybody wish to be heard on Ordinance Number 3408? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Commissioner, Ordinance Number 3409?
Commissioner, let's just, again, for this mayor, let's put this on the record also, that this one, this ordinance, 3408, will be postponed till December 20. Thank you.
3409 is a third bonding ordinance for the water utility in the gross amount of $256,600, net amount of $243,750 for improvements into the water utility.
Anybody wish to be heard on Ordinance Number 3409? Seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And this vote will also be held on Thursday morning. Commissioner, 3410?
Yes, my last public hearing is for, relates to $100,000, fully funded ordinance to continue the digitizing of records that need to be permanently kept in the Code Office and the Municipal Clerk's Office.
Anybody wish to be heard on Ordinance Number 3410?
Or any more, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, the only questions I have is, where will this be kept, the information, when you digitize it?
It's on our server.
Is it on our server, or is it going to be on somebody else's server?
No, my understanding is it's on our server. We have to also keep the records, which we'll warehouse, but they'll be part of our spatial data.
Are we going to, it's a technical question, are we going to be having somebody else store this for us? That's really my question.
No, my understanding is that these will, the actual paper documents will continue to store, and those will be offsite if we ever need them. The digital records is our system, which is spatial data.
So we're going to be warehousing it? You're not going to put it out to AWS?
No.
Thank you.
I want access, quick access. I understand that.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will read Commissioner Rogers' ordinances before I read my ordinances. I'll move to Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Kitek, Commissioner Tucci is also...
Happy to. I have two ordinances to be read on behalf of Commissioner Tucci. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey that in accordance with the provisions of RS 48:4-58, the following transfers of appropriation in the 2018 budget be in the same are hereby authorized and approved. $32,200 from health insurance to communications and technology, recreation, and buildings, salary and wage, for a total of $32,200. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire Vision Care Network Plant Services on behalf of the township, such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944-A 20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, whereas Premier Vision Care, 990 Cedar Bridge Avenue, Suite B7-130 in Brick, New Jersey, submitted a proposal indicating that they will provide the services for the sum of $1,700, whereas funds are available, will be available, from account 901-25226245, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizes the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Premier Vision Care. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
This is a 2019 contract. So move.
Commissioner Petrakko? Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's for Commissioner Tucci. I'll continue on with my resolutions. My first resolution, it's for the Code Department of the Township of Nutley has a need to continue to scan and archive the remainder of our documents per NJSA Title 47 from an authorized participating vendor in a Union County Pricing Cooperative, whereas the Municipal Clerk's Office has a need to scan and archive records and documents that must be preserved as well under Title 47. The Township is a member of the Union County Purchasing Cooperative System through July 8, 2021. DRS Imaging in Springfield is authorized to provide this service, and the cost of this service is not to exceed $100,000 in calendar year 2019, whereas funds are available from account G04161401, Ordinance 3410, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, DRS Imaging Springfield, New Jersey, be awarded a contract for scanning and archiving code enforcement documents, as well as the Municipal Clerk's documents in accordance with the Union County Pricing Cooperative Bid Number 28-215. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next order, Resolution 308-18, this is a resolution to rescind the request for proposal for banking proposals. We need to revise the proposal document, so we're going to basically rescind those proposals and cancel this, the original resolution, which was Number 240-18, and then move on to actually reissue the proposal in a corrected form. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Commissioner Evans?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The next one, 309, this is actually reissuing the request for a proposal, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex that the Municipal Clerk be is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for proposals for banking services, be further resolved that the request for proposals shall be due on Wednesday, January 9, 2019, at 11:00 AM, and should be addressed to the Municipal Clerk, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution, whereas the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 48:11 made by resolution without advertising for bids, purchases of any goods or services under a approved county cooperative program, the Township has a need on a timely basis to purchase these goods and services. The Township intends to enter into a contract with the Essex County Cooperative Purchasing Program through this resolution, and properly executed contracts shall be subject to all conditions applicable to the current contracts. Now therefore be resolved that the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase certain goods and/or services from this approved co-op vendor pursuant to all conditions of the individual county contract. Be further resolved that the governing body of the Township pursuant to NJAC 5:30, 5.5B, the certification of available funds shall either certify the maximum amount against the budget at the time the contract is awarded, or no contract shall be chargeable or certified till such time as the goods and services are ordered or otherwise called for prior to placing the order and certification of available funds as made by the CFO. Be further resolved that the duration of the contract is from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2019. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution is 311-18. This, again, is for our purchasing cooperative programs under the State of New Jersey Cooperative Purchasing Program. Again, it allows us to purchase goods and services using an authorized and effect state vendor for that purpose. The contract will cover the year January 1 through December 31, 2019. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
312 is a similar resolution. This is for a national cooperative purchasing program with various national entities. This enables us to not only look for county pricing benefits or state benefits, but if there is a cooperative out there that's a nationally recognized vendor, and they have the best pricing, we can avail ourselves of the lowest price possible. Again, this resolution will cover our ability to use the national cooperative purchasing programs for the entire year of 2019. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My resolution, Number 313-18, this is a resolution that reestablishes our petty cash fund at $650 for the year 2019. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My next resolution, 314-18, whereas the Township has a continuing need for the services of a special development council through a non-fair, non-open contract as a professional service pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 1944-A 20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, NJSA 28:11, as amended, whereas John P. Englesino of the law firm of Englesino, Webster, Wiskala, and Taylor has ably and continuously provided these services since October 1 of 2013, whereas John Englesino has submitted 2019 fee schedule to provide such services at an hourly rate of $215 for legal services by attorneys and an hourly rate of $100 for services of power, illegals, or clerks. The hourly fee amount has not changed from 2018, whereas the contract... 13, excuse me, 13, from 2013, so it's been a flat amount for several years. The contract amount will not exceed $95,000, and the funds will be available through account 901-226205, which will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer on the adoption of the 2019 budget. The law firm of Englesino, Webster, Wiskala has completed and submitted the business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that they have not made any reportable disqualifying contributions or political or candidate committee to, or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year that would violate NJSA 1944-A 20.5, or the Township's local unit pay-to-play ordinance, or the NJ Election Law Enforcement Commission disclosure requirements, and that the contract will barge on Englesino from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township to contract with Special Development Council as follows, authorizing the mayor and the township clerk to enter into a contract with John Englesino for the period January 1 through December 31, in an amount not to exceed $95,000 at the rate stipulated herein. A copy of the resolution, as well as the contract and business disclosure certifications and campaign contributions, shall be placed on file with the clerk. A copy of the resolution shall be published by law within 10 days of its passage. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and the County of Essex and the Treasurer being she is hereby authorized to refund over a payment of tax charges in the amount of $15,273.48 for the lots and blocks that are listed herein in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and the Treasurer being hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of $6,062.50 for the lots and blocks that are listed in this resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey statute 54:4-3.3 provides that war veterans who were honorably discharged from active service in a time of war in any branch of the armed services of the United States who have been or shall be declared by the United States Veterans Administration to be 100% permanently disabled, connected to their wartime service, be granted a full tax exemption of their dwelling and the lot on which it is situated, whereas the following taxpayer has filed an application for allowance of a full exemption with proper supporting documentation, thus making the taxpayer eligible. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that Louis Russo be granted full exemption from the payment of property taxes from November 7, 2018, and all subsequent years thereafter. Be further resolved that the Treasurer being she is hereby authorized to refund $1,911.60 for property taxes in 2018. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petrakko?
Yes, whereas the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse established the Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse in 1989, educating engaged residents, local government, and law enforcement officials, schools, nonprofit organizations, the faith community, parents, youth, and other allies in efforts to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities throughout New Jersey. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex and New Jersey recognizes that abuse of alcohol and drugs is a serious problem in our society amongst persons of all ages, and therefore has established Municipal Alliance Committee. And whereas the Board of Commissioners further recognized that it is incumbent upon the only public officials, but upon the entire community, to take action to prevent such abuse in our community. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has applied for funding to the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse through the County of Essex, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex and New Jersey hereby recognizes the following. Number one, the Board of Commissioners hereby authorize submission of strategic plan for the Nutley Municipal Alliance Grant for fiscal year 2020 in an amount of DEDR, $20,000; cash match, $5,000; in kind, $15,000. The Board of Commissioners acknowledges the terms and conditions for administering the Municipal Alliance Grant, including administrative compliance and audit requirements. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into specialized professional services, a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 94:44-20.5 with Zirinsky and Hollenbach, 110 Valley Brook Avenue, Lynnhurst, New Jersey, for legal services on March 20, 2018 via Resolution Number 7918. And whereas the Director of Public Safety has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, legal services, $50,000, whereas funds are available from the account number 8-01-12012-205, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the change order number one, in the amount of $50,000, be, and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS 48-458, the following transfers of appropriations in 2018 budget be in the same are hereby authorized and approved, from fire ONE, $25,000, to Township Attorney ONE, $50,000, and also, I'm sorry, police salary and wage, $25,000, for a grand total of $50,000. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex and New Jersey, that Anthony Marino, an employee in Department of Public Safety, be granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective December 6, 2018 through January 5, 2019. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. The first three resolutions are Commissioner Rogers' resolutions. Be resolved that pursuant to an agreement between Township of Nutley and the Nutley Family Service Bureau Food Pantry for the provision of services to the residents of Nutley. The Township authorizes the payment of $25,000 effective January 1 through December 31, 2019. The payment made in full will be dispersed in June, 2018. And be further resolved, funds will be available from account number 901-120-209 for $25,000 and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of 2019 municipal budget. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, of Essex, of New Jersey that in accordance with the provision of RRS 48-40-58, filing transfers appropriation to 2018 budget B and the same are hereby authorized and approved from Health Department, other expenses, $3,300, to Health Department Salary Wage, $2,000, and also to Military Veteran Affairs, salary wage $1,300 for a total of $3,300. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley and the Township of Bloomfield wish to enter into an agreement pursuant to which the Township of Bloomfield will provide animal control services and animal cruelty investigative and enforcement services to the Township of Nutley pursuant to NJSA 26:382 and whereas funds are available from account number 901-134-2009 and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of 2019 budget. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Township of Bloomfield for the provisions of animal control services and animal cruelty investigative and enforcement services. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley Board of Commissioners and the Nutley Chief of Police have approved the following plenary retail distribution licenses to be open from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Christmas Eve, December 24, 2018, and New Year's Eve, December 31, 2018. Magda Inc., trading as Heller &amp; Heller, Franklin Wine Shop, trading as Nutley Wine Shop, Majag Damba LLC, trading as Nutley News &amp; Liquors. Whereas the above plenary retail distribution licenses are only permitted to be opened during these hours on the above dates and times. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, of Essex, State and New Jersey has granted permission to the above listed plenary retail distribution licenses to be opened during said times. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to retain professional services for vehicular wayfinding system design services, Arterio LLC to provide a professional service primarily related to the ongoing redevelopment of Hoffler Roche and to direct traffic between various existing and future destinations within the Township of Nutley. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has determined that Arterio located at 105 Grove Street, Suite 7, Montclair, New Jersey is best suited to provide these services to the Township of Nutley. Whereas funds are available from account number 901-226-205 and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to the resolution. Whereas Arterio will provide professional planning services at a cost not to exceed $50,000 and whereas the anticipated term of the contract is 12 months from January 1 through December 31, 2019. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey and the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Arterio as professional services in the amount not to exceed $50,000. Be further resolved that a copy of this resolution as well as a contract should be placed on file with the clerk of the Township of Nutley and a notice in accordance with the local contracts law of New Jersey in the form attached hereto shall be published in Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
We're going to be reimbursed for that contract along the way. So that will not cost the taxpayers. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire the services of professional engineers to assist the township in defending itself against a tort claim made by Hoffler Roche and other environmental issues as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to NJSA 1944A20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. Where the Chief Financial Officer has determined and certified in writing that the value of the arctic service provided by the vendor for January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019 will not exceed $15,000. Where McDonald, 111 Wood Avenue, Island, New Jersey has submitted an acceptable proposal to provide such professional services required to assist the township attorney in responding to the claim made by Hoffler Roche. Such services will be billed monthly based upon actual time and expenses incurred in accordance with the submitted fee. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, of Essex, State and New Jersey authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with accordance with NJSA 1944-A20.4 or 20.5 with Matt McDonald Professional Engineering Service for the proposal stated above. Be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certificate in determination of value be placed on files with this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas pursuant to NJSA 40-67-23.2, as required by law, the Township has elected to provide municipal services to Cambridge Heights at Nutley Umbrella Associates in the same manner as the Township provides such services on public roads and streets in the Township. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley and the County of Essex that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a 2009 municipal services agreement with the association in the form approved by the township attorney. A copy of the resolution as well as the municipal service agreement shall be placed on file with the clerk. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley through the Department of Public Works has a need to acquire the service of an engineering consultant as a fair and a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944-A20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. Whereas the engineering quarter has determined and certified in writing that the value of the services provided by the vendor of this term will not exceed $17,500, will exceed $17,500. And whereas the anticipated term of the contract is 12 months from January 1 through December 31, 2019. Whereas Penoni Associates, 24 Commerce Street, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide engineering services to a fee schedule attached. Whereas the contract is not to exceed $165,000 for general services, general engineering services, whereas funds are available from account number 901-404-205 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley enter into a contract with Penoni Associates as described herein. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has filed a declaratory judgment action in the Superior Court of New Jersey. In furtherance, the Supreme Court's March 10, 2015 decision captured adoption of NJAC 5:96 and 5:97 by the New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing. Whereas set forth in the Supreme Court decision, municipalities including Township was directed to undertake draft supplemental housing elements and fair share plans to address the current and future affordable housing obligations. Whereas Paul Ricky of Ricky Planning, 10 Georgian Way, Clark, New Jersey, the designated planner for the Township has previously been authorized to assist the Township designated Affordable Housing Attorney in the preparation of filing of the declaratory judgment actions. Whereas the amendment to this contract of Ricky Planning for supplemental professional planning services not to exceed $5,000 and funds are available from account number T26909902 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, certification being attached. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organizations, Home and School Association, Good Shepherd Academy, license number 5118, calendar raffle 2019, Mondays, February 18, 25, March 4, 11, 18 to 25, and April 1, 8, 15 to 22 and 29, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, of Essex, State and New Jersey that the aforementioned licenses are approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County, of Essex, State and New Jersey that the courts will provision RRS 48-40-58, filing transfers appropriation in the 2018 budget B and the same are hereby authorized and approved. From engineering salary wage is $15,000, engineering O&amp;E, $13,000, planning board O&amp;E, $200, street lighting, $25,000, snow removal salary wage, $20,000, sewer salary wage, $15,000, water operations salary wage, $50,000 for a grand total of $138,200. Two, road repair O&amp;E, $60,000, parking lot, other expenses, $15,000, planning board salary wage, $200, recycling salary wage, $10,000, parking lot salary wage, $3,000, water operations, other expenses, $50,000 for a grand total of $138,200. I move the resolution.
Second.
Ms. Travis.
Aye.
Ms. Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person should limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer, but the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rowan Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have two questions for Mr. Evans this evening. Mr. Evans, you referenced the pilot program in your ordinance. Can I get a copy of that under the ordinance? Do I have to offer that?
You can. It'll be part of the next January 3 meeting, so when we actually have the public hearing on that, it'll be available.
It's in the packet.
The ordinance is in the packet.
The ordinances are in the packet. No, the ordinance is in there, but the pilot--
He wants the financing.
The pilot program.
Alan, does he have to offer the financing?
It should be available before that, but it will definitely be available.
It'll be available.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay. And I also understand that we have a new employee in your department. Is that correct?
In what regard?
I understand that somebody left.
Absolutely.
And I understand that there was another individual that was recently hired the past week or so.
Yes.
It's, what did, I'd just like to find out, what is his title, his duties? Just out of curiosity.
Sure, filling the position that was open for the payroll clerk position that was vacated earlier.
And that was a person that left was also a payroll clerk?
No, not at all, no. No, that person, that position is now vacated and I'm going to be actually looking at how I advertised for that replacement.
Was that, was that position advertised? That you just hired--
Payroll clerk? Yeah, sure.
That was advertised?
Oh, sure, a while ago, yeah.
Where was that?
It was advertised on the website and it was definitely on the website, or it could be in the league as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. My first question regards the settlement terms with apartment builder Maka. What are the settlement terms and what is the calculation used to determine the fine the township is looking for from apartment builder Maka to pay?
Ms. Rossi, we cannot discuss the details of that yet. There's no formal agreement, although we're working on it. I cannot reveal any of that. It's part of a negotiation.
Okay, so then, so here is another question. What is in our--
There are criteria under the ordinance and the statute that you're, I'm sure you're aware of. And this is sort of a unique situation, so we're still working on that.
What is our township code and are you using the township code to levy the fines?
I can't answer that.
You can't answer that either.
I mean, it'll be revealed when this, if there is a settlement. If not, then there won't be, but there isn't right now, but we are working on it.
If I remember correctly, several months back, Commissioner Evans, you mentioned that these fines per infraction were, it fell within a range per day.
It can be.
And so I offered a letter from Di Biase to the towns, developer Maka's attorney to the town, and they agreed to make adjustments to those two-bedroom apartments when the tenants leases had expired. So if that's the case--
We haven't agreed to anything and I don't know, I know what letter you're referring to.
Oh, okay, so you haven't agreed to that.
That has not been agreed to in terms of those specific terms. We're working on that.
So is he being fined per day per infraction?
The cap, I can't answer that.
You can't answer that, okay.
Because it's, I'm not trying to be invasive, it's just that anything that's legal like this, we cannot discuss the terms until it's official.
Okay.
And when you, when it's done, you'll, I think we'll be able to answer all those questions because it's still in process.
Okay. It just seems like it should be very cut and dry. You violated and here's the fine.
It's never, Ms. Rossi, I can assure you that it's never cut and dry. When I was prosecuting for 12 years and we prosecuted or we had these violations brought civilly, there were not always a specific formula, you know, and it was very fluid. That's maybe the right word. It's very fluid and it doesn't have to be for every day. It can be for every day. The state fines are different than the local ordinance fines, so it's not, it's not black and white. I can tell you that much. I know that.
And has--
But this is an extraordinary situation and it's a little bit different.
Right. It is extraordinary because our building inspector had given him the COs on those